Welcome to the North Idaho College November 28th, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we have reconvened from an earlier workshop and a executive session. So we do have a quorum this evening, and all board members are present. Board, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes? In doing so, if you have any changes, if none, we'll accept them as they're written. That they'll be accepted. We could go back and read our mission statement, I'll do that tonight since I overlooked it. "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the North Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning." Do we have any public comment tonight? Shannon, anybody sign up? She's quick. Thank you. Takes us to our first agenda item, our favorite item, celebrating success, Entrepreneurial College of the Year, Venture Year, Cassie Silvis and Ryan Arnold, welcome.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Trustee members, President McLennan, administration, faculty, staff, and all the wonderful guests that we have here tonight. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to celebrate this very distinct award as the 2018 Entrepreneur College of the Year. I understand we were among over 1,500 colleges to be recognized for this award across the country. So the past year and a half, NIC has been very purposeful and strategic in building on a dynamic leader, standing right next to me here, meeting with faculty and staff, building partnerships with Gizmo and the rest of the community, just to build entrepreneurial communities. We've created a spirit, and I think our team of Dana Moore, who is our entrepreneurial faculty instructor, Bill Jung with our Idaho's Ball Business Development Center, and having Gizmo on campus has created quite a synergistic feeling of a good spirit and culture. You know, I'm just absolutely thrilled because this has been a dream of mine for a couple of years, to see this power team come together and to do the good work that they do. They think way outside of the box compared to me. I think I'm thinking really far, and they're just like, whoosh, way out there. So, you know, there's a buzz in our community, there's a buzz on campus. Had the pleasure of meeting with some community members today, and they heard about the great award that we've gotten, the buzz is in the air. So I thought, since I have the spotlight for a minute, I wanted to publicly thank Ryan Arnold, standing next to me here, for all the wonderful work that he's done in the last year and a half to turn the spotlight on NIC and put us on the map. He's been absolutely amazing as a leader, and he's brought this team together. So without further ado, I'd like to formally introduce Ryan. He's our Director of Regional Entrepreneurial Strategy, and he's going to do a little presentation on where we're going. Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, President McLennan. Cassie and I didn't have a chance to rehearse this, but I have a video up here that I believe President McLennan would like us to play first, to showcase some of the things that we've been up to.
Well, and it's, sure, go ahead.
Okay, let's start with that.
So, I got this last night.
Community colleges are being asked to step up and to save our economy.
We're looking for ways that we can be innovative, that we can really be problem solvers, that we can be focused on success.
It takes people from wherever they are, from the idea stage to the next-stage growth phase of their business, and then everything in between.
What are we really doing to embrace entrepreneurialism? Not just as a curriculum, but as an action step.
Most community colleges are celebrating 50 years. Traditionally, we've had a three-legged stool: tuition, property taxes, and state aid. And over time, those dollars are diminishing, and it's forcing us to be innovative, to do something different, to think differently and to act differently.
The President's Pledge is really a declaration of a president, chancellor acknowledging an awareness, an understanding, and a commitment to implementation of an entrepreneurial mindset. The way we go about doing our work in business has changed. Previously, there was, much of the work was done, was all good work, but much of it done in silos, and not interacting, not seeing connections, patterns if you will, not leveraging each other's expertise to get the job done. And so that's a basic tenet of entrepreneurialism, is taking down those silos, is that cross-pollinization, if you will, of people and ideas.
The President's Entrepreneurship Pledge, the goal of it really is that a president adopts an entrepreneurial mindset, but if I told somebody, "You need to adopt an entrepreneurial mindset," how do you even do that? So the pledge was designed to have five simple steps that really helped presidents think about how to be an innovative leader. The first step is about a president empowering internal and external teams to lead in an entrepreneurial way. The second step is to engage entrepreneurs in the life of the college and in your classroom. The third step is working with industry. The fourth step is engaging with industry and trying to develop sort of these partnerships in the communities, and then creating awareness and buzz in the community, and that's really all about stories. But importantly, it's a celebration of students and leadership.
So this is the second college I've made the President's Pledge. The first time I did so because we were just beginning to go on this road. I had become a member of NIC, and I was trying to find a way to encourage the college to come along with me. And by making the President's Pledge, and one of those is creating a buzz and being visible and involving others within the institution, that worked.
It is my, it's your pleasure to present you with this year's 2018 North Idaho College Award for Excellence.
We are receiving the 2018 Entrepreneurial College of the Year Award. It's very humbling to receive this award because of the energy and the commitment around a pretty diverse array of programs and services that are all ultimately targeting entrepreneurship and innovation, and creating a community of learners and faculty and mentors to take this to a whole new level.
We need to bring our governing boards engaged in this conversation, get them to understand that we are transitioning. And if we develop our own leadership mindset, if we are able to engage our faculty to see that it is okay for us to teach and develop curriculum around entrepreneurship for our students, then I think as an institution, we will build a broader ecosystem that would involve our internal clients as well as our external community, because they're looking at the community colleges to help revive our economy and to build our student and our workforce for the 21st century.
Thank you.
So, as you saw from some of the video tonight, we have a diverse range of services and programs. And that's something we've talked about here on this campus for a while, is not only how do those programs and services work independently, but now, how do they work together? And so when we talk about why we received this award, and why NIC came to the top in 2018 nationally for our entrepreneurship work, that's really the core of what we've been doing for the last year, is organizing the things we already have in place and making them work better. So I know I have just a few minutes to sort of give the snapshot and the overview, and that's what I wanted to do this evening, because the questions we got when we returned was, "The award is awesome. Tell us more about all the programs and how you got to this level so quickly." And it's really not about Ryan, it's about all of the things and all the programs and pieces. Cassie mentioned Dana Moore and his program, sorry, I'm fiddling with, with his program with the Avista Center for Entrepreneurship, and that was really the baseline program that started all of this for us. Dana has grown that program significantly in the last few years, and that allowed us to think about all the other resources that we could put into it. So real quickly, the thing I'm most excited about with Dana's program is where he's been with high school students. He's now teaching entrepreneurship in three of our regional high schools, and this January, we've put together a competition, a sort of head-to-head, to get them excited about entrepreneurship in a new way. So we have the Youth Venture Challenge coming up this January. I'm pretty excited to see how that turns out, and the opportunity for us to grow that past just those three schools to five schools and beyond, and to link that to NIC as sort of a feeder, is really interesting to us on the entrepreneurship field. I'm going to go through these quickly because there's so many things, but Gizmo Quarterlane is the other thing I wanted to highlight. We talked about this earlier this year, when I was up here in front of this board, about this partnership and this opportunity, and since January, they've moved in, and they've started to build these connections that we imagined. I was in here giving a tour of some of our HR folks today, showing them Gizmo and showing them some of the resources, and we ran into a young student, and he was milling a part, and he was on a big machine, and there's sparks flying, and he's sweeping up around it, and so we asked him, "What is he doing?" And he's, he told us, "He's working on a class project. He's an engineering student here at NIC." And the NIC engineering, or students decided, for their class project, they'd like to build a water jet machine. And a water jet machine is another higher-end tool to build more parts, but instead of them just saying, "Well, we don't have that tool here on campus," NIC and Gizmo came together, and they're designing their own tool. They're building it themselves. And so for us, what we always imagined as Gizmo, being that place where education and hands-on experience actually happen, between NIC and this fun, creative space, and we're starting to see that in this fall semester. If you go back to January, it took a lot of time to get those tools and resources in place. Gizmo did over 30 summer camps over the summer for the community and NIC, and now fall was the first semester we actually got to lean in and take on some of these class projects. So I'm pretty excited where that's going. The Northwest Entrepreneur Competition is something I've been working on for the last six months. I'm on the board of this program, and it's been run by Whitworth for the last nine years and Gonzaga for the last seven. It's the largest entrepreneurship program in the Northwest. It brings together all of the universities and colleges and some of the high schools to compete in April of every year. Whitworth signaled last year they'd no longer like to run it. They've done it for long enough, and they're ready to hand the torch over. So University of Idaho and NIC made a pitch with the University District of Spokane to join this together and bring this program to NIC and Spokane, so we have greater representation. So if this goes well in the next month, we should have this event here by 2020, the biggest event in entrepreneurship in the region. So I'm pretty excited. I want to see this program succeed no matter what, but I think with where we're at, NIC is the perfect place to host it. And then one of the things that we've talked about is the Venture Center. It's a term we've thrown around a little bit, but this last summer, I worked with the Development Office, and what we decided to do is look at the resources we had and to see where we could go. And there was a large grant with the Economic Development Association, the ISICS grant, and what we found is it was the perfect match of where we're at for commercialization and education coming together. Gizmo, with where they're at, helping students create new programs and new products, we saw a continuation there, and where we want to be with workforce development, of bringing students and workforce together, that's always been a mission of ours, but how do we do it on campus? So we pitched an idea for this Venture Center, a rapid prototype lab where we have a few more tools, some more resources that attract businesses to come work on campus with students. And so I'm crossing my fingers, and I hope you all do too, that we get this grant, because this would be a huge opportunity for us, for NIC, University of Idaho, and all of our regional partners to work together on something very new that no other college or university in the region has like this. So excited for what's to come. And then finally, what's happening this week, I thought it was relevant. Women's Entrepreneurship Day is this Friday. Last year, they had over 300 women entrepreneurs come together and celebrate success, and we're hosting this Friday night in Schuler Hall. So I welcome you all to come join us. It should be a really great event, and I'm excited for them to have it here at NIC this year. So that's the short term, the long term, and the future in a pretty broad overview. Any questions, comments?
I'm sure we do, just real quick.
Please.
Aren't we just in our second year at the Entrepreneur Center?
So the Avista Entrepreneurship Program really got started four years ago, Cassie? Five, four and a half, five?
I don't know.
Five years ago. And when Joe was here, and then, but it, so we're building on that, and bringing Ryan in as our Regional Entrepreneurship Director, and looking at the non-credit side, the competitions, the events, and certainly the two years that it took us to get Gizmo, our relationship ironed out with how that might work, and now how we're building up alongside Gizmo, you know, it's just, you know, we got this award this year, and I joke a couple times that we feel like we got an award for a car we haven't built yet.
Well, that was my point, and you already have a national award. I mean, that's just fantastic.
I know, we can just stop now, right?
No.
But I think what was recognized through that is the synergy and the community of programs and services that we're bringing together that can't help but collide with each other and have really good things come out of. We know that we're going to have students go out of our four-course sequence credit program, and they're going to, they're going to go and play in Gizmo maybe and try to build something, maybe scoot over to the rapid prototype space that we're creating, maybe end up over in the SBDC, which we probably, I said today to a group of people, I think we have the best SBDC unit in the country.
And talk, say the acronym.
Small Business Development Center.
Thank you very much.
And it's under Bill Jung, and I can say at least the best in Idaho, but it is, they are just elevating not just businesses, but leadership in those businesses in just a really amazing way. So you have all those, and the Virtual Reality and Augmented Reality Lab in our collaboration with the University of Idaho, and Gizmo in that space, and all of these things are coming together to just create a lot of energy. The water jet project with our engineering students is just one. Last year, we created, the board funded, a line in our budget for an innovation fund. That innovation fund allowed us to support that engineering class and faculty and students with some of the materials they need to create this hands-on engineering project within the Gizmo space. So, you know, it's just, it's just starting to build. We've got Ryan, Dana, Bill, Cassie, and others that are just, they're just the right people, and it's just, it's a beautiful thing to watch it develop. Glad to be a part of it.
Board questions for Ryan, comments?
Great job. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's just fantastic.
You're making us look good.
I'll say.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
Congratulations on the award. Okay. That takes us to Tab One, Action Item, Canvas of the Board of Trustees Election. Chris Martin.
Chairwood, members of the board. Idaho statute requires the Board of Trustees to canvass the trustee election that was held on November the 6th, 2018. I believe you've been provided a copy of the results. At this time, I need to read into the record the results of the election. The election was canvassed on November the 16th with the following results. For Zone 1, Christie Wood, 42,803 votes. For Zone 2, Ken Howard, 41,628 votes. And Zone 4, Joe Dunlap, 41,292 votes.
My kids, my kids. Look back twice.
Congratulations on our trustees and their uncontested elections.
I think Ken owes me a coffee, but that's a side note.
I told my kids not to vote for her, and they did anyway.
Isn't he terrible?
This time, I would request a motion to accept the canvas of the election.
Do you have a motion to accept?
I would move to accept the, uh...
Motion by trustee Murray, a second? Maybe Mr. Banducci would do that for us. Would you second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Tab 2, our next action item, is our election of officers. So we will start with Board Chair. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, I have a whole wing of people down here.
I'd like to nominate Christie Wood as chair.
I would second that.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Well, I appreciate that. I did get the most votes, Ken, so.
I wish you'd quit reminding me of that.
All right, all in favor of Christie Wood, remaining Board Chair?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Vice Chair, do I have a nomination? Trustee Howard.
I would nominate, what's your name?
Brad.
Who's the vice chair right now?
I am, but you could...
No, I nominate Brad.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Trustee Murray, I have a second from trustee Dunlap. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I should have discussion, but seems like we're having it as we go. All right, and Secretary, Treasurer, do I have a motion?
Sure, I would move to nominate Mr. Dunlap as Treasurer.
Joe Dunlap, do I have a second? I'll second that. All right, all in favor?
Well, see if there are any other ones.
Oh, well, nobody's jumping for joy for that job. Are there any other nominations? No. All right, all in favor of trustee Dunlap?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we stayed the same. We didn't change anything. All right. Well, thank you for all of your service this year. That takes us to our constituent reports. First up will be Asnic, Peter Soddenberg, welcome.
Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. McLennan, and guests, always an honor for me to come up and speak and give you a report on the students and what Asnic's been up to. So we had Thanksgiving break, and that was amazing. Students loved it, it was well-received. Gave us the energy to finish, finish this upcoming three weeks, so we're excited about that. And now we're back at it. So before Thanksgiving break, we had the opportunity, the whole Asnic team actually, to go to Gonzaga University for an ACUI conference. That's a conference for leaders on campus to learn about how to use their voices and their positions to make a difference on campus. It was a great opportunity. We got to make connections with people from Washington, Colorado, and just all in the Northwest areas. So it was really a great opportunity to connect with all those different leaders and also learn a lot of things that we can apply back here on campus. So it was a great opportunity to be a part of. Here on campus, we had another Three Clubs start, which is always a huge success to get more students involved here on campus, so we're excited to do that. Our vice president, Scott Kennedy, has been working hard on that to get more students involved, which we are always pushing for. Currently, right now, Night at the Library is going on, which George McAllister reported on for the midterms earlier, the midterm study night, and that's last, at midterms, it brought in 200 students, and we're looking like we'll have around that same number tonight. I was over there earlier today, and it was packed, there was tons of food, which is always a draw for students, and they're, everybody's studying, and it's really a great resource for students to have tutors and talk to teachers before the finals, so that's always a great way to prepare us for the upcoming exams. I mentioned earlier about starting a Student Advisory Board at the Parker Center. We were able to do that two weeks ago. We didn't have the same turnout we were expecting, but we were able to hear from a few students about their concerns and how they can better connect with the main campus, so we were able to talk with students there and give them an avenue for us to hear their concerns. We learned a lot, and we're addressing a few of the items that they brought up about how we can better connect the main campus to the Parker Center, because sometimes it can feel like there's not connected, so, and make sure they know the resources that they have available to them. So it's really a great opportunity for us to do that and connect with those students. St. Asnic is a way, is another initiative that we're working on right now, which we do every year. It's a way for us to help the students who don't have the same resources as other students to provide gifts for their children or close friends. We had over 40 applicants, and then we put up a tree downstairs, it's a tree of giving, and other students pick up the applicant's number, and then buy gifts for that child. And then this Tuesday, which all of you are invited as always, we're going to be having a big Christmas party with Santa Claus, of course, and we'll be giving those gifts to all those students who received those gifts. It's a great opportunity for us to help other students, and we're always excited to do that. Other than that, we're continuing our work with our initiative to make NIC tobacco-free. We're continuing to get students' inputs around campus, like I reported back earlier, we've had over 130 to 140 students sign up and say they're in support of it, as well as sign a petition. We also just sent out a survey to all students to reach any students who weren't able to give that feedback, so that they can give feedback to us over anonymously, so that we can get their feedback, and then we'll be pursuing that to the next step and taking that toward, a policy towards call Senate after. We take in the suggestions that we hear to, we call Senate. So that, in a short, sums up what we've been up to this month.
Great, great report. Board questions for Peter?
I have a couple.
Yeah, trustee Banducci.
When and where will Santa be?
He will be right up here in this room. So, actually, no, I take that back, he'll be downstairs on Tuesday at 4 o'clock.
Okay. And what were the three new clubs that were just formed?
There was an outdoor skiing club that was formed, a jiu-jitsu club that was just started, and I don't know the third club off the top of my head.
Cross-country or downhill skiing?
Uh, downhill.
Okay.
Anybody else? Peter, I had a couple. Well, first of all, we don't have much time if we want to get something for St. Asnic. How soon do we have to have that, too?
The gifts are due back by Thursday night.
This coming Thursday?
Yes, this Thursday tomorrow.
Do we drop them off in the Asnic office?
Definitely, and any gifts are always, there's always, there's gifts that aren't returned to us, so if you have, even if you don't have a person in mind, sometimes people pick a tag and then don't return gifts for that student.
Okay.
So it's often really helpful when people drop off extra gifts, so that we're able to make sure that no child goes without receiving a gift.
Good for you. And then the smoking issue that you're working on.
Yeah.
Have you studied other campuses in the region? What are you modeling your policy, your proposed policy after?
Yeah, so actually, this is, Asnic is in a partnership with the Truth Initiative. Asnic started this initiative back in 2011, when a senator pushed to make this a policy, but it got turned into a guideline, then, so now, Truth Initiative gave a $25,000 grant to NIC to push towards a policy and an education behind that policy. I'm part of that team to promote the education system, and then the student government, as well as other students, have joined in, and Asnic has came in support and saying, "We want to continue this effort that has already been started with the Truth Initiative." So we have, we're actually basing a lot of our policy off of the guideline that was already established back in 2011, so the policy will look a lot like the guideline that is already in place right now.
Good, great. Okay, trustee Howard.
I suspect just more, a little more about the gifts.
Yeah.
Do you take money gifts?
We don't prefer to take just cash, because then it can get confusing with Asnic having to deposit that money, and that we prefer, gift cards are also a great opportunity if you don't have the ability to get a gift or anything like that, but we try to avoid just getting cash, because then that gets kind of messy.
Peter, always take his money. Just say yes.
Yes. There we go, give it to the foundation, and then we'll...
No, I was just thinking in terms of if there are people who don't receive gifts, if you have a cash reserve, that you could buy gifts for them.
We do, that's what Asnic budgets, a certain amount of our money to go towards that exact thing, where we, on Thursday, after we account for all the gifts that we've received, we check back with our database to make sure all the gifts are accounted for to each student, and if there's a student who didn't receive a gift, then our team will go out shopping and shop for those students who didn't receive a gift.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions? Thank you, great report.
Thank you.
Staff Assembly, Kathy Sparks, welcome.
I hope you all had a happy Thanksgiving. Staff Assembly, at our last meeting in November, we had Diana Rents come and speak, and she talked to us about what a climate survey is, and then we also are in the process of working with her and faculty assembly on our own survey that will be going out December 3rd. So I want to say thank you to Diana very much, because she's been very, very helpful to staff assembly and faculty assembly. So I want to say thank you to Diana very much, because she's been very, very helpful to staff assembly and faculty assembly, executive committees in preparing the survey. We also had another guest speaker, Ken. Ken came and let us all know about some upgrades to our network security. We will be, it's called Duo Sec, Duo Security, and it's a one-touch authentication, which will make things much more secure for us at NIC, and hopefully stop some of the phishing emails. So that's really helpful. And also in January, he's going to have an online education that we can take to educate staff and faculty on network security and teach us what phishing and malware and such is. So that's what we've been working on. We also, staff assembly created an ad hoc committee, and we started looking at a few policies and procedures that directly relate to staff assembly. So hopefully in a couple months, you'll see some of those. And that's it.
Board, any questions for Kathy?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I had a quick one. Kathy, you mentioned a survey that you worked with Diana, is that the climate study?
No, it is not.
What is it?
It's just, so we had the survey earlier in fall that was kind of open-ended, and so we've designed a survey to get more specific questions, to identify some areas that can be worked on, and also to identify some things that are going very well at NIC.
Okay. And, and so is that something that your, your administration is working on as well, or is this?
So-
It's been a collaborative effort-
Yeah, so-
-between all of us.
Our, our Office of Institutional Research and Planning has been working with the, the two assemblies to, to work on it. It, it, we're not calling it a climate survey, but it is climate survey-like. It has to do with climate and culture and, and those sorts of things. We're still, as I mentioned, I think a few meetings ago, we're, I was going to say in my report, we're right in the thick of administering the 360-degree evaluation process for presidents, cabinet members. We're going to roll out another phase of that in the spring semester for the rest of the administration. But then also, following on that, we will be administering a third-party administered institutional climate survey that's aligned nationally with, and we can norm it, and we can compare ourselves over time with responses from year to year or every couple of years when we do that. And, you know, it's just something that we should be doing on a regular basis anyway, because there's always issues and things that we need to be addressing. Can't really do that if we don't know how widespread they are.
Okay, and so then the survey that will be conducted, what, do you pull together a summary, and where does it go? Who, who reviews it?
So it, it will be a confidential survey, and the only people that will be analyzing it and collecting the data will be myself, Joe, and Diana. And we'll do something similar to what we did before, create themes, and everyone in campus will get the analysis of the survey.
Okay. All right, board, any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add one-
Oh, please do.
You know, I, I just want to commend both faculty and staff assembly for seeing the need to do something after the first kind of open-ended responses came in that were very unfiltered, and the responsibility that they've approached this task with. I'm very comfortable with the process that's in place to review the information, to put it into themes, and, and to actually make it actionable, so there's, okay, so what are, what are the, what's the call to action from some of these things that we need to, you know, respond to? And so from my perspective, it's, it has a very positive impact. But I just want to thank both of these two here, along with Diana, who's out there in the back. You know, it's really been a collegial, collaborative process, the way they've tried to do this, so I want to say thank you.
Great, great. Well, faculty assembly, Joe Jukobi, welcome.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, guests, thanks for letting us share what we have going on. My report is going to sound a lot like Kathy's, because we had very similar meetings, same guests, same themes. But maybe I'd like to also throw in a congratulations to all of you who won with overwhelming majorities.
Just me, Joe, just me.
I wasn't going to say anything about how do you come in second when you don't have any opposition, but can you manage to do that?
Miracle, it was a miracle.
But thank you all for your service, because it's a thankless task, and, and it serves the college a great deal, and so we all appreciate what you do. So yeah, we, we also, for faculty assembly, spent some time talking about the culmination of, it's been pretty serious for about a year, talking about faculty titles. So going to assistant professor, associate professor, and full professor. So that finally is falling into place, and so we very much appreciate Lita Burns's help with that and Dr. McLennan's help with that. Alan Lamb as faculty has real, really spearheaded that, and so it's finally happening. And I think we're pretty excited, so.
I think that's overdue, so great.
Yeah, I've always, I've, I've thought it would be a nice thing, and so I'm, I actually went into Webdriver and I updated, you know, associate professor. I resisted the urge to put "all-powerful leader of the universe", because I thought that could be overstepping my authority.
Maybe.
But my students might not agree with that. They wouldn't think I'm overstepping at all. So that was, that was a, a discussion that we started off with, and then, of course, we heard about the campus security, and we talked about the survey with Diana. And I'm really looking forward to us getting positive inform, or information that we can use constructively to try to find improvements and, again, recognize what's going well. And so that was pretty much our meeting, and we'll be meeting again the 13th of December.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
Board, questions? Thank you, great report.
Thank you.
And we have one more here. Senate, Jessica Adams.
Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, and guests. College Senate last met on November 15th. At this meeting, we passed our second reading of the trustee emeritus status policy, which is for a first reading before you today. Our second item of business, Dr. Lita Burns introduced a new policy and procedure for student complaints written by the Accreditation Executive Committee. This policy and procedure was formed due to requirements for upcoming accreditation cycle. So there was quite a bit of discussion and questions during our November meeting. Therefore, we had to table the first reading, and we will continue the discussions at our December meeting. And our December meeting will be held at noon on Wednesday, December 12th. It is a week earlier than typical, which was changed in our October meeting due to when faculty contracts end for the December break. I would also like to add, as students appreciate the Thanksgiving break, so did staff and faculty, and we're looking forward to our Christmas break. That concludes my report, any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions, board?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question of all of you. I, during the Thanksgiving break, I believe somebody fed the students. Tell me about that. Didn't all of you serve?
So this was just prior to the Thanksgiving break, and, great, you want to just share what you, what happened?
Was it at your house, Gray?
It, it was, absolutely, and I grew and harvested and prepared all the food, so thank you for that question.
Wonderful.
Now, thank you, President McLennan and Chair Wood, too. Now, we were so pleased with our Sedexo food service, we wanted to introduce to our students in a big way. While they've been providing a limited service as far as we made the transition, we really wanted to let them know what Sedexo or contractors capable of doing, and so we put together a Thanksgiving meal to show our appreciation to the students, and it was, we had members of the president's cabinet actually serve the food, Sedexo prepared all that. We turned this into their private dining room, so with help from lots of people around campus, we decorated the tables, set up a great atmosphere, had music in the background, and so really had a traditional Thanksgiving dinner for our students. And they were incredibly grateful, really enjoyed the evening, thankful, and talked to us about how much they enjoyed that. We'll be doing more, we have one coming up for Christmas, and we'll do some in the spring as well.
That's really nice, some of them can't go home, so that's wonderful. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to our president's report, Dr. McLennan.
Thank you. So I already talked a little bit about the survey and, and the 360-degree, so I'll answer any questions you have about that. Also, just wanted to mention and say thank you to all the folks in our college community who helped with the North Idaho Legislative Tour. Many of them are in the room here tonight. It was my second version of that, and the first time I'd just come on board and was kind of watching what was going on. This was really a good opportunity to share a lot of information. We've got a lot of challenges in the legislature this year. You know, we have, of course, we have a new governor, we have, I think 25% of the legislators are new legislators. The J-FAC chairs will, both Maxine, Bell and Shankio have, you know, retired from those positions. So we know that's going to change. We have outcomes-based funding on the table, which all eight public institutions are enthusiastically supporting. And at the same time, the state board suspended EWA, the Enrollment Workload Adjustment Funding Formula that was in place, and, and what that did was it, it really committed, there's got to be a commitment to some action to provide funding to higher education in, in, in a different way. And we don't know what that's going to look like yet. If OBF, so back to the legislative tour, I had the opportunity to interact with a number of legislators. Sat at dinner with Wendy Horman and Senate Pro Tim, Brent Hill, and the whole dinner was, you know, here's what we think about outcomes-based funding, what do you think about outcomes-based funding? And it was a good conversation, I, I, you know, they understand the issues. But we just heard from the governor's office yesterday, and then again today from the state board, that the governor-elect is very interested in, not sure where he is going to line up on outcomes-based funding, would like the colleges to prepare and submit the line items, either the ones they submitted earlier this year or to develop new line items. If you recall, in our discussion last month, not to go into the detail of outcomes-based funding, but if, if EWA, Enrollment Workload Adjustment, were, we were to revert back to that, that's actually harmful to our, our situation. It's a negative, assuming that there would be a clawback of, it's close to $700,000. The impact would be on the college. OBF moves us in the other direction. So, you know, Chris did a pretty nice job yesterday in a budget presentation setup for a management team. We're getting ready to launch that process. He put a big image of Gumby on the screen and talked about flexibility. This is probably one of the most flexible budget sessions that we're going to have experienced in some time. We know it's going to work out, it's just we probably won't know what the landscape's going to look like for some time. Last year was, if midnight was the end of the process, it was about 11:30 when we knew what was going on. It probably will be about 11:59 this year, the way things are, are shaking up. But overall, the legislative tour was just a great success. Laura was instrumental in that, as others were. We took, I don't know, 80 or 90 legislators on a tour of Parker Technical Education Center, and it wasn't just one of those, let's go look at the building and see how nice and pretty it is. We broke, our, our staff and faculty broke up into eight tour groups for those 90 or so legislators, and took them through 12-minute stops all the way through the building, and, and they were there for about, a little over an hour going through that building, and faculty were at, in the program, answering questions, and they had a lot of questions. And the impact, I think you're going to see in some policy way around CTE and how we're doing CTE, based on some of the conversations we've had with them, as did our faculty during that tour. It was very, very impactful, and I'm just grateful that we had the opportunity to show them that. They were wowed by it, I mean, absolutely. I mean, I am still, and I've been in the building 100 times, so that was pretty good. With respect to the budget development, we are launching that. Again, this is going to go through the principles of, you know, transparent, team-led approach, widespread involvement, with a continued focus on student success and, and really pointing towards those key planning elements that we've been working through in the last couple of years. I have a, I and you, and Ken partially, have a Idaho Community College Consortium meeting on Monday. We'll be in Boise, again, looking at how the four community colleges can work in a very strategic and collaborative way, especially going into this legislative system. We're trying to, it's going to happen, set up an, an interaction with the governor-elect to, now that he's in office, to maybe get a better idea of where he's going with his education policy, higher ed, education policy. Thank you.
Well, I would share your comments on the tour of the facilities with the legislators. I was in Doug Anderson's group, and there's no chance at any time that he stuck to the 12 minutes per subject matter. But everyone wanted to talk, they really wanted to get deep in the details, and I would not be surprised if some of the legislators come back and request a view that they can reach out to some of our faculty and administration to really delve down into some of their questions.
I think Cassie may have left, but, you know, they, a couple came out of that and said to me, you know, "We need to get Doug Anderson down to the state to help us work through some of these CTE issues", so.
They're very-
I don't know how Doug feels about that, but, yeah.
No, that was, that was really a great presentation, and I think they enjoyed it, so thank you. Any questions of Dr. Dunlap? I'm not, I'm sorry, yeah, Joe, any questions of you?
I'd be happy to answer anything.
Dr. McLennan, sorry. Still getting used to it, a year into it. All right, that takes us to tab four, or excuse me, tab three, an action item, accept NIC financial audit for the year ending June 30th, 2018, Jody Doherty. But I see Chris walking up.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I just, I wanted to introduce Jody. You know her by now, I think. We're all getting really familiar with, with her and her team and the work she's doing, and it's, it's my pleasure to introduce her tonight to talk about the audit.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to start by thanking Sarah and her team. They do an excellent job. The audit went really well this year. We didn't have any findings. There was no journal entries, I mean, everything went really well. So her team does a, a very solid job every year, so, thank you.
Really glad that Peter said he wasn't accepting cash in front of the auditor. Peter, well done, son, well done.
So you have a copy of the draft of the financial statements in your packet. So I just wanted to highlight some areas. I met with President McLennan and trustee Dunlap earlier this afternoon and went over the financial statements in more detail, so I'll keep it brief here. But let me know if you have any questions. So, most important, the, the first thing in the financial statements, page two and three, is the auditor's report. And at the very top of page three, you will see that, "In our, in our opinion", the financial statements that you have before you represent the financial position of the college as of June 30, 2018. Just a couple of other things that are in that report, right below that opinion is an emphasis of a matter. That's just to let you know that there was a new standard this year that was implemented, and as a result of that implementation, the beginning net position or the beginning equity had to be restated. So that is part of those financial statements. And, and then the auditor's report just goes into some detail about other reports that are included in these financial statements and the different levels of opinion that we give on those different pieces of the report. Real quick, the, following the auditor's report, it's what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis, and this is written by Sarah and her team. It gives a high-level overview of what's in the financial statements. So if you didn't want to actually read the financials, you could just read the summary and kind of get an overview of what happened during- an overview of what happened during the fiscal year. Real quick, on page 13, on your balance sheet, I just wanted to point out, related to that new implementation that happened this year, there's a new asset showing up on your balance sheet called the Percy Sick leave, added 2.4 million in a non-current asset, so it's not really an asset that you own and can see, but just something new that's on your, on your balance sheet this year.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that more of a liability than an asset?
It's actually overfunded by Percy. I mean, Percy holds it, and it is overfunded, so it's actually showing up as an asset currently on your financial statements. If it was underfunded, then that's when the liability would, it would show up as a liability. So in this situation, it happens to be an asset. The second page of that balance sheet or Statement of Net Position, towards the bottom, you can see that the, the ending equity or ending net position, the unrestricted piece, the 13.5 million, that is what's available in theory for future budgeting. That's your unrestricted net position.
Jody, where's that?
On page 14, towards the bottom, it says unrestricted. It's the net position. So one thing I wanted to point out, of that 13.5 million, you're not allowed to show your design, what you've designated from that unrestricted net position, so there is a footnote disclosure, and that's on page 23, where it talks about net position. And in that footnote, it discloses that, of that 13.5 million, there's 5.8 million that you as a board have designated for the capital expenditures of the college. So I just want to point that out because it's not included on the face of the financial statements.
Question, if I may.
Trustee Banducci.
In lieu of the footnote to support it, is, we still consider unrestricted because although we have made that designation, it is reversible, if you will, or we could change our mind on that? Is that why it's still considered unrestricted, even if it's been earmarked, if you will?
Yeah, the, the GASB doesn't allow, it allows for the three designations, your capital assets, what's restricted by outside, the third parties or enabling legislation, and everything else is unrestricted.
So it's considered revocable, so it's unrestricted? Okay.
And then I also wanted to point out that after the financial statements of the college are the financial statements of the foundation, as defined by GASB, the foundation is a component unit of the college, and so we're required to include those financial statements in here. So it doesn't get confusing because they're under FASB instead of GASB. We separate them, so those financial statements are following the college's financial statements. Those are audited by other auditors, and we do rely on that audit. As far as the footnotes go, everything is the same as it was last year, except for two or three footnotes that are different. I just want to point out, Note 8 and Note 9 talk about the other post-employment benefit, and that's in line with the new standard that was implemented this year. So the Percy Sick Leave Reserve is on there, and there's a whole footnote about that. And then your, your other health insurance, post-employment benefit, there was a liability recorded last year, but with the new standard changed the way the actuaries valued that, and so some of the disclosure is different related to those other post-employment benefits. So that's Note 8 and Note 9 that are different this year. And then Note 13 is new this year, and all that has to do with is disclosing to you how beginning net position was restated because of the effect of implementing that new standard. So it takes what was in last year's financial statements and shows you the changes in how we came up with beginning net position. On page 46.
Yep.
Any questions on those financial statements?
Board, Trustee Banducci.
Just noting in Tab 3 and the cover sheet for that, it talked about that there was a presentation of the audit findings to a small core group consisting of one of the trustees, the president, Chris, and Sarah. That has already occurred?
Yes, that, we did that this afternoon.
Okay, so that was today, then?
Yep.
Okay.
And I will say that there, as far as the audit and the financial statements are concerned and the controls over that, we did not have any findings. There was a minor finding related to student financial aid that we talked about.
Trustee Howard.
I don't know the appropriate name for it, but there is a fund that is used to pay off the bonds for this.
Dorm housing.
The dorm housing, that sort of thing. Were they included in this audit?
The, yeah, so the, these audits encompass all of the funds that the college operates, and included in these financial statements are some, the debt service-related schedules that are required by your bond documents, and those start on page 50.
Page what?
On page 50. So those are just other supplementary information that talks about the bonds and the debt service So those statements are not required by GASB or anything, but we stick them in there because you're, for the bond documents, or the bond requirements, it's just, it's just easier for them if it's included in your financial statement.
You indicated that the foundation was included because they were affiliated agency to the college, and I was wondering if the student fund, the student dorm fund was also considered an affiliated agency to the college, and so it was required to be included in this?
Yeah, Chris might speak to that better, but the, the foundation is a discreetly-presented component unit, which is why it has a completely separate set of financial statements, whereas the dormitory housing is more of, runs like a fund, a fund of the college, so it's not, it's not a separate legal entity, right? It's not a separate legal entity like the foundation is.
Trustee Howard. So the DHC is its own, its own entity with its own board.
Right.
But all the finances for the DHC run through the college. It exists in concert with, with the college. We receive all of their fee revenue, and so without the college, the DHC does not have a revenue. And so that's why we've included this with the bond documents, to show how that segregates out.
Okay, but you didn't show it as a separate entity.
Correct.
You showed it as part of our.
As part of the college.
Regular, huh?
It has operated as a fund.
Okay. Yeah, just so, I want to make sure it was included in some way, and that we, had somebody looking at that also. Thank you.
And also, just for your information, the financial statements includes the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which shows all of the federal awards that you had during the current year, and that starts on page 61. It's three pages long, so if you're, if you're curious, the different programs that, and federal awards that were operated during the year. This year, we did an audit on the Head Start program and the Student Financial Aid, which we do every year because it's such a big program. That's very high-level. Does any, do you have any questions?
Board, any questions on the audit? Kind of been asking them as we go along, but is there anything further?
No.
Good. Thank you. Oh, Trustee Dunlap.
I would make a motion that the college accept the results of the 2018 audit as presented.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I've got some discussion.
Certainly.
Because normally what we will do is have a first reading and second reading, and we seem to be avoiding that lately.
Okay.
And I'm wondering why we don't do, do, give everybody an opportunity to review this and, and get back to it. Is there a reason why we can't do a second reading?
Madam Chair, Trustee Howard, we typically don't do that for the audit because the board simply accepts it. It's, it's not up for review or discussion or change, it's just accepting the audit. It, it falls in the calendar of when we were required to put this out for the state review, and that deadline is actually Friday this week. And so that's, that's how we have come to this place where we do this in this order.
And I can appreciate we either accept it or reject it, but if we have objections to it, then we would object or reject it. And having those objections sometimes takes some time, but I can understand if there's a timeline that we have to meet of this Friday. That's a good reason to not have a second reading.
Is that, is it, if I may, excuse me, sorry?
Trustee Banducci.
To follow up on Ken's question, for future reference, would it be possible to move up the timeline on the audit just a little bit, so if we wanted to schedule it for, say, an October first reading and November 2nd reading, to accommodate if people would like more time to review it? Is that put a, is that a challenge with?
If it is, just tell us. Madam Chair, trustees, that would be a challenge. It's a tight timeline now to get this in, in the required timeframe the state allows. We can definitely go back and work with Jody's team, but it's, it's a tight, tight timeline to get this done by November.
Thank you. All right, then I'm going to call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jody, and thank you, Sarah and Chris, the whole team, once again. Great work.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to add one appreciation on top of yours. In the single audit, there was only one finding this year for our financial aid in Registrar's Office. It had to do with one date out of 60, and that is the least amount we've had since I've been here, and I just want to share my appreciation to the enrollment services team and specifically the Registrar's Office and Financial Aid. That is a huge feat to only have one item in that particular category.
Just a question, is the, is the label finding for what that was?
It was, it wasn't a finding. It was, it was.
There was another word for it, I thought.
I'm going to lean on Jody here on what she referred to it as. She sat down.
Yeah, it was not a compliance finding, but it was a deficiency in the control system because we didn't catch it.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Dunlap.
Chris, could you also mention the great strides the college has made in reducing the amount of student debt service related to financial aid?
Absolutely. If, if you have the chance to look at those last couple of pages that talk about the number of federal funds that the college is, is a recipient of or a trustee of, if you look over the last couple of years, you'll see a significant decline when it relates to financial aid. And that's, that's due to the great work of Grayden and his team, and how we've limited students' access to unsubsidized loans and really helped reduce some of the debt burden. And so that's a sizable difference that you'll see over the last four years. And so, Trustee Dunlap, thank you for pointing that out. There's a lot of great work going on. I want to definitely give Sarah credit for the work that her team does, but down that hallway in financial aid, there's a lot of work that goes on that's reflected in this as well.
May I ask a question?
Trustee Banducci.
Curious then, Chris, because I'm aware of that, you know, I've been on the board for six years, and I know that's an initiative that you guys have worked hard on and the way you've done it, and even how you've changed the disbursement timing of the money and various things that you guys have done. Were you guys in a practice of budgeting, if you will, for whatever our liability was going to be back to the feds for that? And is that a budget line item that we've adjusted because it's gotten smaller, if you will? Because there was some time where I understood we had some liability for some of that money, and we actually had to cover some of it, and.
Madam Chair, trustees, that relates to some of the return to Title IV and our bad debt.
Yes.
And, and the amount that we've written off over time. We've gotten much better at the management of that bad debt, and you'll also see that change over the last few years. Part of it is due entirely to those changes that Financial Aid made. The other part has to do with Sarah and her team really focusing on that, and some of the changes that have taken place, especially this year with Jessica Grantham and her team, they're, they're really managing that bad debt piece very closely, and we have seen great reductions there.
Because I know one of the questions we'd had before is why we didn't, you know, do collections, if you will. I know that had been discussed. So with Sarah, with what you're just discussing, or maybe we're not doing collections, but are we having more contact? Is it a more, give me an example of how we've improved that.
Madam Chair, Trustee Banducci, obviously, collections is our, our last resort and what we try to do. The way that we're communicating with students and trying to work with them to provide them opportunities and set up payment plans or keep them in school, there's been a great focus all through Lee Kielde Hall to keep students in school and work with them so that collections does not become an issue. We do use collection agencies, and that's, that's part of how we manage that bad debt, but it's our tool of last resort, if you will.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Tab 4 is an action item, authorized design for the Meyer Health and Sciences Building Expansion. Chris Martin.
Chair, members of the board, I was so excited to have audit behind us that I was just going to go sit down. Very excited to bring this before you this evening. Back in October, the board held a workshop and discussed an interest in beginning the design work to expand the existing Meyer Health Science Facility. This expansion has been identified as a need for quite some time, but most recently during the facility master planning work that has happened over the last year. And this has been part of the college's integrated strategic planning efforts. At this time, I'm happy to stand for questions, but we're coming before you tonight requesting the authorization to move forward with the design work for what is anticipated to be a 16,000-square-foot expansion over two floors, including additional science labs, instructional spaces, required program storage, faculty offices, and the associated spaces with that. This expansion is anticipated to leverage the existing elevator and stair tower, and at this point, we have a planned project budget of approximately $7 million.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to make a motion just to start us out, and that is, I move to authorize the administration to engage a design firm to begin design of an expansion for the Meyer Health Sciences Building, to use a capital reserve fund as a funding source for the design purposes only.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Are you going to put an amount with that motion, or that sounds like a blank check?
Well, it's for the design purposes only, it's not for any build. That's why I added that to the end of the motion.
For the design?
We don't have an estimate on, quite frankly, the design cost.
We need them to go get that, so.
Madam Chair, members of the board, because this is a negotiated amount, we typically don't disclose what, what our budget for design would be. We try to work with the vendors to negotiate the most appropriate price that we can, we can get.
Okay.
And that's why there's not a number listed.
I'd have loved to have heard that number in the executive session, then.
Yeah, we need a second.
Do I have a second to Ken's motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second by Trustee Dunlap. Okay, discussion? Trustee Banducci, you had a comment?
Well, I think, yeah, here's my comment, not to sound too critical here, but with this action item, this line item, if we're going to approve funds and we're not going to publicly disclose what that number is, which is fine, and I understand there's appropriate time for that, I'd have liked to have had that briefing during the executive session today, so I know what sort of number I'm agreeing to or approving.
Does it go out to bid? I'm sorry, is that the process? Is that?
Madam Chair, members of the, of the board, yes, we would put this out in the RFQ, Request Qualifications, and in this particular case, for Architectural Engineering Services, we would have the opportunity to interview all the interested parties, rank those, and then go into negotiation with the, the top proposer that we believe will be the best suited for this project. If for some reason we can't negotiate a, a price that meets our needs and, and the firm's needs, we would move on to the second proposer in that case.
But what defines our need? In other words, we haven't bound it, so I don't have a number, so if you come back and say, here's a negotiated amount, do we have the opportunity then to say yes? then to say yes or no? You know, we, we originally, in the workshop, we had it about at 6.7 million, at least that's my notes, and so now we're saying seven, that's fine, rounding error. But even when we did the last little thing, we said, okay, it's 34,000, you know, there's times we, we bound it, but even if we did it, at least like a range, where we think we're going with this to negotiate it, you know, if we have some idea.
Madam? Trustee Howard.
Again, you know, first, my motion was for design purposes only, whether it's 6.7 million or 7 million, I mean, that's something we have to decide down the line, after we get a design, and, and we go through the design and say, is that, is that what we want or not, and what's the cost? So, this is for design only?
Architecture fees.
Architectural fees and engineering fees.
My point wasn't the 6.7 versus the seven, again, that's in rounding error, I, I deal tens of millions of dollars in my world, but my concern was, I don't know what I'm paying for the architectural design study.
Well, um.
And I don't even have a ballpark.
Trustee Banducci.
20,000 or 100,000.
I don't think that we will have that, since it's going to go out for RFQ, now, now we will rely upon our administration, who does these sort of things all the time, to review those and make the, the best decision for us, that is really what we've done with all of our projects. Trustee Murray?
I'm just interested in the, the timeframe of when you go out for an RFQ, and, and vendors are able to respond, is that two weeks, is that six weeks? And is there a time in between there that we can discuss internally?
Madam, madam Chair, trustee Murray, we have the RFQ prepared, and we typically have it out for between a month and six weeks. It, it has typically been our practice, that the, the board would be invited to have a representative on that RFQ selection team, and be part of that process with, with the college. With these large projects, we've typically invited, well, actually, I don't know if that's the right way to say it, the board has, has worked with us, and has put a representative on these projects, to keep the board informed along the way, and to provide the administration with a close working partner, to make sure these projects are moving forward, as we both want to see that happen. And so that's been our practice in the past, and we anticipate that would be the case this time.
Okay. And I don't know if we, though, we did it this early on, before the, before it went out to bid for the design, but I'm certainly open to that, if one of the trustees are interested in us forming a liaison right now. Trustee Howard?
Did we have a motion?
Yes, let's get back to our motion, and then we can move on to that. All right, I'll call for, call for the vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. But to continue that conversation, are there trustees interested in being part of a, trustee Dunlap, you're interested in being a liaison? Anybody else?
I'll be his assistant.
Oh, trustee Murray, you have to take notes. Okay, and then we have other projects coming up, and we'll put other trustees on those committees.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. That moves us on to tab five, our first reading, our action item for emeritus status policy. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you, madam Chair. During the spring semester of 2018, the board tasked the administration with researching emeritus status, to recognize certain, certain college representatives who retired or resigned from service to the college. The administration presented the board with a draft policy for bestowing emeritus designation for former North Idaho College trustees, retired administrators, retired full-time tenured faculty, and retired full-time staff. At the board's request, the draft was sent to the college senate, and the senate formed an ad hoc committee to review the draft. The ad hoc committee conferred and revised the language as presented to reflect that emeritus designation may be bestowed on former NIC trustees only. And, so you'll see the discussion of that, the, the draft policy is attached for your review. And, of course, we have our, our college senate president here, who can also answer questions, you about that discussion and the process involved in it.
Great, okay. Board, any questions on this proposed policy?
I got a suggestion, maybe on the wording, only in the last sentence of the first page, current trustee must nominate a candidate within three years of his or, or his departure from the board, and I would just change that to the, within three years of the candidate's departure from the board, because I'm not sure what the, who referred to, whether it was the current trustee or the candidate. When you read it carefully, you can figure it out, but that's cleaner language, I think.
Okay.
And I guess the only other thing that, there's a sentence here that said we can, we can ignore everything that's in this policy, if we want to do it, and nominate somebody. Is that, is that the?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I would love to do that, and trustee Howard, the reason why we left that last statement, saying that, not necessarily that you can throw them all out, and just make up your own decision, we added that because we figured that this is a brand-new policy, and there may be a trustee from the past that you may want to recognize, and we didn't want that three-year limit for that. So, that statement is really going towards that if there is a trustee you want to recognize from the past, that absolutely allows you to do so. We didn't want to limit that.
That's great, any other questions on that? Well, I, thank you so much for working so much on this policy. It is important, there's some trustees, I, oh my gosh, I can think of lots of them that served decades, and I would love it if we could honor some of them for their, their hard work and their contributions. So, I'm happy with it. Board, any other suggestions on it? Great, well, thank you, good work. So, this is not an action item, or it is an action item?
First reading.
Just first reading, thank you. All right, takes us to the board chair report, and I guess I would just like to, in all seriousness, I'd like to, to thank all of the voters in Cootney County that came out and supported our college trustees. We do enjoy our positions, we, we kind of laugh and joke that we, we didn't have opposition, so we didn't have to get out and campaign really hard, but I think that that's, I, I appreciate that, I hope that means that they like the job that we're doing, and I know that the, that we're committed to it, all five of us, no matter what trustee is up for election, the work we do here means a lot to us, and we're committed to helping the college move forward in all of its mission. So, thank you to the voters for supporting us, let's see. Oh, I would love to, the president gives me some great notes. We have two political science students in the back, will they stand? Are you here to observe for class? What'd you think?
I'm a board member.
Okay. I love that, it's bureaucracy.
Honesty is a virtue he has.
Is that a motion?
That was perfect. So, with that, I don't have anything further, do we have, go ahead, we have remarks for good of the order?
I just want to remind you about two events coming up. One will be the celebration of strings, which will be held at St. Tom, St. Thomas Church tomorrow evening, at 7:30 PM, and then our amazing Christmas concert, which is held on December eighth, which is an evening concert, 7:30 in the evening, and then again, it repeats on Sunday the ninth, at two o'clock in the afternoon. And I believe the members of the cabinet will be ringing the Crocker Center Christmas bells, the red kettle bells, for those concerts, so.
Fantastic.
Please come and enjoy the beautiful sounds of Christmas.
It's a great show, thank you, thank you for reminding us. Any other remarks for the order? All right, with that, we will adjourn.